Next up is the Flawless Transformation Incorporated. If there's anyone from that organization that'd like to come up. Please introduce yourself and state the organization's address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcella Briggs. I am the founder and executive director for Flawless Transformation Inc., which is a new nonprofit. And it will be located in North Miami Beach, but we are going to service North Miami clients. Like I said before, Flawless Transformation is a new non-for-profit. However, I've been working in social work for over ten years now. I used to work for Career Source, so I know it inside and out. I used to be a workshop facilitator. So what we did was to help people place them on jobs and so forth. And help people with employability skills and resume writing and things of that nature. What we want to offer with Flawless Transformation is our programs, which are very important. Flawless Career Coaching Program provides professional clothing and innovative educational programs such as career tests and assessments. That's through the Meyer-Briggs Program and Employability Skills Training. The second program is called The Refinery. The refinery is something very important for me when it comes to, first of all, helping women, women who are under privilege, who really need the assistance. We want to host workshops on entrepreneurship, housing opportunities, financial literacy, health benefits on fitness, nutrition, and holistic wellness. A lot of our women that we've helped in the past, they don't have access to health benefits of those sorts, or housing, or entrepreneurship workshops and things of that nature. So we wanted to present that in addition to the career coaching. Another thing that we want to work on is a one-year campaign, is to help one hundred women place them on jobs. Well, with career, with, I'm sorry. Give me one minute, sorry. I'm a little bit nervous.
That's fine, there's no need to be nervous here, we're all here for a good purpose.
This is my first grant, I'm doing this all on my phone and I'm like, ah.
It's completely fine, completely fine.
Thank you, thank you. So, yeah, I took a leap of faith to really do this.
It's good.
And it's close to my heart because I've seen so many women over the years that have come out of broken situations, domestic violence survivors. I just went up to Tallahassee not too long ago with Miami's Worker Center. And we're doing a workshop with the survivors. So when I see the need, I'm like, it's just more to than employability skills. The women need help on all facets of life. And holistic wellness is one of the main criterias. Because psychologically, if you're not thinking properly, then you're not able to function well on the job. So if we can provide these things like mindfulness.
Keep it going.
Base, you know, interventions and things of that nature, that's very, very beneficial. Like I was saying before, our one-year campaign is to help one hundred women tell their transformational stories. So that's something that I'm working on on my own, I'm pulling in the money on my own. And like I said, this will be my first grant, so thank you for hearing my story.
Oh, good, oh, that's fine. Is there anyone who has any questions for the applicant?
Can you tell us what, tell us what Flawless stands for?
For Flawless? Well, the reason why I came up with the name and the logo, it's actually a cluster of different gemstones and diamonds and rubies and sapphires. So I see all women as flawless. Because you know what it is, they come and tell you their horrible stories and everything that they're going through that is so bad. But if we show them a different perspective, that life is, you know, something grand and greater and healthier, then you can transform. So we're looking at flawless in a more positive aspect, rather than something negative.
Do you, do you, do you meet here in the city of North Miami, or is it something, does your organization meet elsewhere?
Well, yes, I used to in the past. So right now, what I want to focus on is North Miami and North Miami Beach. Because working at Career Source, most of our clients came from North Miami and North Miami Beach. Haitian, Hispanics, yeah. And the majority, again, are women who are living in a very impoverished state.
So obviously, staff thinks that you've got a great idea, a great concept here. Unfortunately, you've requested ten thousand, they only recommend, recommended to us eight thousand. It is quite difficult because it is kind of a leap of faith when we have existing organizations here that are doing such great work and our hands are tied, we're limited. But whatever the outcome is and whatever you get, please just keep pushing.
Thank you.
And it seems like from your website and the amount that you put, work that you put into it so far, you've done a lot for this, your first year.
Excellent. Thank you very much, we appreciate your time. Thank you. Next organization, North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizens Inc. If there's a representative that'd like to come up, give a brief summary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Blanca Cobbo. I'm a board member with the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizens. Our executive director had a surgery, minor surgery last week, and she couldn't be here tonight. The North Miami Foundation was founded in December of nineteen seventy-four. It has been at the same location ever since, at six twenty northeast, one twenty-seventh street. What we do is, our goal is to improve quality of life for our frail seniors in our community and help them remain safe and independent as possible in their homes. Our services include transportation to grocery stores, social work, support services such as screening and assessment and counseling, home delivery meals, homemaker services. And we also have a group of volunteers that call, the people that are homebound and check on them weekly and make sure that, you know, if they need anything, they notify the foundation so that we could help them with all their needs. We have requested ten thousand dollars. And this funding will be, we will be able to provide two meals a day, seven days a week, for about five clients, all of them in North Miami. We have about four hundred and fifty clients. We service North Miami Beach, Miami Shores, the immediate area. But in the North Miami area is approximately a hundred and fifty. And we feel that, you know, actually, about one of every seven Floridians in the age of fifty, sixty and over, most, a lot of them face hunger. And by providing them with a meal that is delivered to their home on a daily basis, they, at least they don't have to worry if they cannot, you know, if they don't drive or whatever, if they don't have anybody close to them to help them to get a meal and be safe at home. So that's what we are, with that money, we will be able to provide two thousand three hundred and seventy-four meals by the end of the program. With, for all the people that we service in the area.
But that is with a ten thousand dollar grant, not an eight thousand as our staff is recommending to us.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make that clarification for people that may be watching at home. Because your organization is fantastic, and I feel very strongly that we should be giving you, you of all organizations should be getting at least that ten thousand dollars.
Well, we appreciate that. And we can certainly use the funds.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I definitely agree with, with him.
Yeah, thank you for the work you do.
The work that you have done, I know several, actually even a family member that was cared for, and your organization is fantastic, and I wish that we could do more.
You know, we don't have that many employees.
Right.
But they work very hard.
Right.
When I retired three years ago, I've been going a couple of days a week to see if I could help with some of the paperwork and stuff like that. Because they really need the assistance.
Yes.
They do a lot of work for the community.
Right.
So we would appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your time, man. All right, for the next organization, number nine, we have MJD Wellness and Community Center Incorporated. If there's someone from that organization that'd like to come up, give a brief summary within their, within their lot of time, and introduce yourself and the address of your organization, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Emmanuela Floriman, and the organization address is eight twenty-two northeast one hundred and twenty-fifth street, North Miami, Street one oh three. I am the actual founder and president of this beautiful organization. What we do, we promote health and wellness, and we educate people how to live a better life. Because we started that organization in two thousand and four. When I started, I think that it was a game, but I didn't know where I put my feet on. But in reality, it's a need in North Miami. Last year, thank you so much for this opportunity, guys, you helped us with three thousand dollars. We was able to host sixteen different events in North Miami. Eight was in the senior living apartment, where we provide wellness education and food for them. And the other eight was in different sites of the city of North Miami by providing free health services, social services, immigration services. To do all, all of that, we partner with different organizations such as Borinca Medical Center, FLEC, Lawyer Association, the Nova University, UM, to name a few. We want to continue doing the service, because this year we was able to serve, like for people that we put in our Excel sheet, two thousand people, and we still have people from August, October, because we, we didn't have even end September. We didn't put yet, so we don't know how much people we have left to add in our sheet. So every month, we serve from three to four hundred people, residents of North Miami. And we are very proud as a young professional to be able to serve all those people. And the fund that we ask, we asked for several things. Not only I have me, I have a lot of volunteer that help out. So now, we need to give them something. Four years doing that service, they need to get at least something, even not a pay, but at least a one hundred dollars to go home. Have more counselor like me to go to the seniors to educate them. Because based in that program, we was able to save so many lives. And right now, next year, we're gonna start a HIV program where we distribute condoms. We partner with Florida Health Department, where we distribute condom in North Miami. But whenever we see a lot of group of people and the local business, we already have our basket, we put the condoms. And if, and the event, every single event, we go and we distribute condom just to help them to have a safe, a better life. So we're waiting for your phone, we cannot continue without you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, anyone on the commission that'd like to provide input or?
Just real quickly. Because your closing statement, you said without our, this, this grant, this funding, you can't continue.
We're gonna continue because we've been doing it, without it, we're gonna continue, but if you drain us, we'll help a lot. We will provide more services. Like I told, like I said, we start a program with the three thousand dollars by going to the seniors' center, by providing health and wellness counseling. I was the counselor, I don't have no problem, I have the degree, I have the education. I don't want to get, I don't have no problem not getting paid, but as soon as the message is out, I'm very, you know, happy because I work. But if I can hire two other people who has the same knowledge as me, who's really dedicated to help out, we can save more lives. Because I remember I went to three apartment, there was like three seniors leaving by themselves. One of them had her high blood pressure and two hundred and eighty. And if you know someone that high blood pressure, two hundred and eighty, automatically that person should be died. And I was able to call nine-one-one and help that. And other, 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 call me for food, call me at any time, but it's something that I didn't have. But if I increase that services in North Miami, where we have more Haitian population, me, I was able to speak four language. So thanks God, I can have someone that help me, not going to the Spanish, to the Haitian. We need help to do that, because it's a lot, it's a lot. That's what we request, more if we can have it, so we can provide more services.
And how much did you receive last year?
Three thousand one hundred and seventy-six. But even though we have support from a lot of people in the community, the businesses, the friends help out. Because like, for example, when we want to pay for the transportation to go get the food at Homestead to donate, I can ask any of my friend, they will be more than happy to help me, especially by promoting those event. The Haitian media help a lot, they help me promoting, but, you know, you cannot ask all the time, at least one day. If you, ten dollars, we make them like, you know, oh, Manu did something, because the community call me Manu, Manu did something. But I never had that opportunity to do it. But they see what I'm doing, they, they help me on it, and we was able to serve the North Miami resident.
So any national grants that you grant writing?
No, so far, our first grant, it's North Miami. And this is the second time, I remember last year when I come, I didn't know what to do. And I don't even know how to write a grant. I told them, I'm, I'm a physician. I know how to provide health services, but I don't know how to write grant. But this year, I would like to thank them, because they have a workshop, they have Peggy to help out doing all the paperwork. I don't say that I am, you know, but I'm close. And thank you so much, Mary, for that great help, because without that, I would never be able to do it this year.
It's good to hear that our city staff is helping out the community, same way the community is trying to give back as well. So, anyone else have anything they'd like to ask?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you very much, we do appreciate your time and all your efforts in the community.
Thank you to you, and I would like to add that, if you want more information, MJD Wellness and Community Center, all social media, website, you will see our work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, let's see, organization number ten, Communities United Inc. If there is a representative from that organization that'd like to come up, give a brief summary. And please introduce yourself and the address of the organization.
Can she hand you guys?
Sure, Debbie, sure.
And we just want you to take out those three sheets of paper real quick. It should be, um, the first three pages. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Now we can.
Good, good evening, and thank you for having us here. My name is Hattie Willis, and I'm the executive director of Communities United. We have two locations, our location in Miami is four three three two Northwest Seventeenth Avenue, Miami, Florida, three three one two seven. And I say that by reading it, because not only am I doing what I do for everyone else, I was a victim. And what I do is I teach, I have a medical background, and I teach disaster preparedness for senior citizens, to let them know what they need to do in the event of a disaster. And I started doing this with Hurricane Wilma. And I sounded the alarm, because I had worked nursing for thirty years, that what happened in that nursing home was gonna happen in Miami if no one listened to me. Because all of a sudden, in our communities, we start seeing these high rises, and no one was putting an evacuation plan or a thought process in to what do you do when you got a hundred senior citizens in a tower and the windows don't open. So thank God for the work that we did, we fought, we fed four thousand seniors every day and made sure they had food and water all over Dade County when that disaster happened with Irma. So that's why we didn't have the death like they had in the nursing home. So I've been doing this for the last twenty-five years, and it's what I do. This is a hurricane kit, it's what you guys would need at your house. Everything here is the same thing that you would need. Shayla gave you a gift, I hope she gave you the jump drive. And I've started, and I'm gonna tell you why you got the jump drive, and I'm gonna make you laugh, because most of you don't even understand this. So, okay, computer's not working, phone's not working, what you gonna do, everything got destroyed, you're now with nothing. Guess what, if you had scanned in all of your legal documents on a jump drive, and you had that bracelet on your arm when it's time now to talk to FEMA, or the hospital, or the bank, or to get your money out, because you lost everything, you've got something that's viable. You see how quick that turned into something else, the bank's not open, the card's not gonna work. I had Wells Fargo, if you had it, they were out for eight weeks. So the point is, teaching seniors what they need to do before doing and after the storm. Now, something horrible happened when we had Irma, but we are always arrogant in Dade County. If you tell us it's a one, we going home and go to bed. We not doing anything, we might get some gas if we lucky, so we learn to stop doing that, because it doesn't work. I'm gonna be quick. What I did was, after that, we found out that there was four programs in Dade County that were giving money to help senior citizens repair their homes after the damage. I gave you the first page, it's Rebuild Florida. They were gonna close up on the twenty-fifth of, the twenty-third of December. I helped the county force them to stay open until next year on the March the twenty-third. And then we forced them, now they're still open. I know a lot of people in North Miami don't know it, you guys have a great system of getting out information. You need to let them know that they still can get that money up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I also was instrumental in signing up at least a hundred and fifty people in your community, in your community. I did over four thousand all over Dade County. And the lady that's here, Ms. E. Rose, I need, I'm asking for some help for her too. In the back, she's got a code violation that I need you guys to help her with. Her house was destroyed, please look at the picture, I want you to see it, she's still living in this. And we just, we just got her money, she just got awarded over fifty thousand dollars to get her home repaired. And we're working on pulling permits so she can get her home back up in order. And when Hurricane, the last hurricane came, Dorian, I was so afraid for her life. I went to the United Way, and I begged them to give me money to put fifteen people up in a hotel so that they wouldn't die in their house. And I know that if that had happened, it would have been more death, you see blue tarps everywhere. So my, my, my ask for you guys is that we're still recovering from Irma, don't forget Irma. I just got back home eight months ago. So we need your help to get the word out to the people, to sign them up for the program before they do close the doors. We were able to get the Red Cross to give at least twenty people in your community sixty-five hundred dollars. They had a grant that they were giving out, a lot of people didn't know about it, that they could have gotten that money for Irma if they had spent seventeen thousand dollars in their homes. We were able to accomplish that with Peggy's help and her boss here, they helped us, and we went to your offices, and everybody did a really great job. So that's our ask, this is what we do, and you're smiling, but make sure you have this, because if you don't, you're gonna be in trouble.
Well, one second, ma'am, is there anyone from the commission who have any questions for the applicant?
Oh, and the other thing I wanted to say to you is that the mitigation program for rebuild for the whole, I'm talking about your city now. The water mitigation opened up today, they had a conference down south. You may not have known it, because some things don't come to your website. So please look at that, because people may have seawalls or live on canals, that money is there now for them. It's six hundred and sixty-one million dollars, you will see it there. And the other thing that I gave you was, the state attorney, she did a whole document on what needs to happen. And the county changed the code, and the state changed the code, all of the code now for Florida. You must have hurricane windows, you must have doors, you must have roof. No one can now do that anymore to some homeowner. So if you've got questions for me, please ask.
On the commission?
That's great information.
You're doing such a great job, and I'm hopeful that, you know, you will continue for the next thirty years doing the same thing.
I hope I live for the next thirty years doing the same thing. Believe it or not, I laughed, I just told Shayla, she knows this, I had total knee replacement three weeks ago. And I just walked across the street to come to this presentation without a cane.
Look at that, well, thank you very much. All right, well, no, thank you, man, we appreciate your time and all your efforts. All right, well, with that being said, let's move on to the, the next organization. We have Youth, Youth to Young Adults Inc. If you may, sir, introduce yourself and state the address for your organization, and also just a brief summary.
Sir, we're fixing the microphone, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Monte Brown, and I'm here with Youth to Young Adults. You still can't hear me?
I can hear you.
Is the green light lit?
Yeah, with green light?
No, that one doesn't, no, it's fine, I hear him coming up.
So, I'm with Youth to Young Adults, we service Miami Dade. I heard the, the information about the emphasis being on organizations who are based in North Miami. We serve Miami Dade County, we're an upstart, newly started nonprofit for youth to young adults who serve at-risk youth, and those in particular who are in the foster care system, who are aging out of foster care. So this pet project, for me, this proposal that we're putting forth to the city of North Miami means a lot to me as a social worker. I've worked with families who are, of course, are low income or beneath the poverty level. And I realized that there was a need for financial literacy. So this is the reason that we came up with this program, is to start addressing this at a younger age as opposed to when a person becomes an adult. As was mentioned earlier, because life happens and circumstances happen, where we want to move, we want to grow, we want to purchase homes, we want to invest in property, et cetera. This is going to be the foundation that we're gonna use to educate our youth, and we're starting with middle school. So we're starting with fourteen and fifteen-year-olds. And our program is like a twelve-week course. We're gonna do it over the, the, where it coincides with Miami Dade Public Schools, School sessions. So for the spring session, Easter, fall, and winter break. So these courses will be like in a series of four. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's fine.
They're gonna be four-hour sessions. And they're gonna cover a lot of different topics, and some of the topics would be making money, financial decisions that we make, budgeting allowances, student savings accounts, making major purchases, using credit card loans, consumer rights, and recognizing trouble and knowing what to do about it. This might sound like it's a lot for kids to take in, but there's actually a nationally recognized program that we're using their model to start educating these young adults. This information is gonna be useful not just to members who participate, but those who bring it back home to their community, to their family members. Because as was said earlier, a lot of our families don't have financial literacy. And they may learn from the youngest one in their family how to succeed, and how we can move forward as a community. So this is the reason, and this is the purpose of our financial literacy program called Common Sense. We're going to, we're going to do this, like I said, in that seven-week period on Saturday mornings. I'm in negotiations with FIU, Barry, they're gonna provide us with some volunteers to help us come on board. Because we don't have a budget where we can pay staff, these will be volunteers who will be doing this for us.
Okay.
So you currently don't have anything that you're started yet?
Yes, well, we're doing a lot of work in the community, we just had a back-to-school giveaway. We're doing a World AIDS Day event that's coming up. We're also doing a toy drive for Christmas, and also through Catalyst, a tree planting, environmental issues, so we'll be addressing things like that.
Unfortunately, they didn't give us a website or anything, so we don't have information on your actual. And again, we kind of are going off of staff's recommendations, and unfortunately, you know, you had requested ten thousand, and.
No, you requested five thousand.
No, it's fine.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, you requested five thousand. But it seems as though maybe staff had allocated other, to other nonprofits. allocated other, to other nonprofits. So, um, I'm not sure exactly why that is. Um, I mean, I think what you've got i- is a, a, from just hearing it is a great idea. But like I said, unfortunately, I wasn't able to research your organization as I was the others. Um, so I'm kind of at a, um, a loss for you, um, to push or not push, I, I guess.
I wasn't aware that you didn't have that information, but thank you for letting me know. But we do have a website. It's Y two YA, the acronym for Youth to Young Adults. Y two YA INC dot org.
Alright, anyone else on the commission would like to, uh, have discussion, no?
And how many kids are you dealing with, uh, do you, in the course of this?
So, right now, we've serviced up to five hundred different families and individuals. And we also do a community, um, daily bread giveaway and, and throughout Miami Dade.
So of those five hundred families, how many of them were from the city of North Miami, do you think?
Um, a smaller percentage, maybe about ten percent. But as we said, we're reaching out into our community to find community partners that are willing to partner with us. There's our providers in this room and they know me and they know the work that I've done and the passion that I have for what I'm doing. And, and I know that on, one person cannot do it all.
Absolutely not. No, and, and I think, uh, you know, obviously no, funds haven't been allocated thus far. Um, ultimately, we have to go through as a commission and decide as a group. But I think it's what's important to take away, um, for those who may not have gotten as much as they requested is that, you know, there is a limited amount of funding.
Right.
But this is a good, I think this format is very good so that we can hear. Maybe next year you come back around, we could see, you know, now that you kinda hear what the commission looks for in terms of community involvement. Maybe there's something that you can add to your packet that you think might be beneficial to might be able more presentable so that, you know, maybe you can get future funds. So I, you know, I don't want, uh, anyone to think here that if you didn't get what you want or if you get nothing, that this is some type of decision or testament of the hard work or effort that you're putting in.
Right.
It does not represent that at all. Uh, we just hope that, you know, everyone here in the room recognizes that there is limited funding. And that, you know, this, this is, nothing is set in stone as to what can happen tonight or in the future. So, we do appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the work you do.
Absolutely. Um, with that said, uh, we can move on to the next organization, uh, Prosperity Social and Community Development Group Incorporated. If there's anyone from that organization that'd like to come up and, uh, give some information as to their program? And please state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Love it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nadeshville Sanders and I'm a resident of North Miami. One twenty-five eighty, Northeast Miami Court, Office eleven seventy-five, one twenty-fifth, um, Suite four hundred. But in North Miami. Um, thank you again for this opportunity. I stand here today to talk about the adult literacy program that we've had in the city of North Miami since two thousand and thirteen. The adult literacy program serves adults ages forty-five and up. The majority of the adults in that program were Haitian descent. And we assist them with obt- obtaining their GD and, um, I don't know why I'm nervous. I do this all the time. But however, we assist them with obtaining their GD. And also, the purpose of incorporating that adult literacy was to partner up with the library where we had t- assist the parents to learn how to read to their children. And we had several different family nights. We were able to, and secure funding to get several different organizations from Dollar General, I think Wells Fargo. And we put together family nights where we would have adults come out, read to their kids, and read to other families. And what we really increased in that program was the importance of them obtaining library cards. Which a lot of them were not familiar in that, did not have some of that in their own culture. And then they no- didn't know the importance of it. However, with this program, we had it for the, the, the majority of like four years from the time we were funding from the city of North Miami. But last year, we had put a hold on the program because the Dollar General was looking for how we can partner up with cities to incorporate new programs for youth. So we stopped the adult literacy last year and focused on the youth. Where we got funded in the city of North Miami to can, to do this one, one pilot project with the youth. So this year, we again reapply for the adult literacy. But the years that we were applying for the adult literacy back in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, the city did not have other city, um, programs. Like, they did have the food, the food program, I'm sure. But they didn't have the city red, the cities program for the youth, the, um, the seniors. They didn't have the city, the seniors program back then. So I understand where the conflict came in, where they said they had too many programs in the city for adults and they didn't see the fit of the adult literacy. However, the partnership with the library made so much sense because the parents, the kids are already at our after-school program. So the parents are there to obtain library cards and also sit in some of the activities that we've done. So that's why we're coming back to reopen the adult literacy. We have serviced over the years, three years that we've been at North Miami. About a hundred and fifty residents, only residents of the city of North Miami. And about fifty of them, I'm gonna contain. About fifty of them obtained their GDs and currently are, um, students at Miami Dade Community Colleges. Which still come back and their kids are still at our adult literacy programs. We've had a long history of partnership with the city of North Miami and the library. And I hope you did visit our website.
I'm on it now.
Any questions for me?
This commission, one commission have any, uh, any questions?
So you, you did receive the, uh, grant last year and how much did you receive?
About three thousand. It was only for the youth pilot program.
Okay. And so this year, you did request, um, ten thousand?
Yes, to continue the adult literacy program, back with the library.
And how many, um, did you service with the three thousand?
With the youth?
Yes.
About eighty youth.
Eighty youth, okay. So with the ten, it's to bring back the adult?
Yes.
Alright.
You should have questions.
Yes, let me ask your question. Is it because that you are competing with the North Miami Senior High Adult Education? Is it, that's one of the reasons why perhaps?
They might say that. Well, I would say the difference, the difference between the adult literacy is a smaller setting. And it's, um, one certified teacher and a GD, uh, certification person. And most of the parents are already parents from our adult, from our after-school program. They're not necessarily parents from the North Miami State Adult Education. And most of the time, while we're assisting, assisting their children with homework, they also attend the program as well. And they participate in a lot of the programs that the library has.
Any other questions? And, and you have, um, volunteers that are?
Yes, the volunteers come from the, the high school.
The high school.
Most of the ki- most of the young looking for community service hours, we encourage them to also participate in the after-school, to volunteer at the after-school as well as staying over to help the adults. And I don't know if you guys have the package, but in the package, you will also see, well, you will also see a partnership letter from the director of the library, how we also put together where we get sponsors. Because a lot of times, the city doesn't sponsor some of the family reading nights that we have. And we pick parents from our program that reads to other families. So, that is the reason why we encourage to continue that because we started having a lot of families come out and obtaining library cards. So that was a very great success for us at the time.
Right.
So Lucia's gonna be mad.
Let me ask you a question. What are you, okay, with that, what, what are you going to use the fund for?
Just for the certified teacher and the DG person.
Okay.
That's it. The program is completely free. Residents doesn't pay. The library provide us the space that we need. Just to pay the certified teachers to come out for the two hours, that's it.
And the GD person?
And the GD person. Which some of the funding that we raised money for, we pay for the applications for the GD.
And, I'm sorry, what, um, other types of funding or grants do you receive?
Um, together with Lucia and I, we had the American, um, American Library Association. We had funding last year for them, from them, and Dollar General, um, Florida Blue.
Okay.
And, um, Miami Dade Community College. Those very small grants, but it's to help to continue paying for the teachers.
Of course. Okay.
That's it.
Alright, thank you very much. We do appreciate your time and your effort. Alright, moving on to the, uh, the next organization, the Natasha Financial Services Inc. If there's a representative from that organization that'd like to come up and give a brief summary, um, on their, on their efforts as well as introduce yourself and the address to the organization.
Good afternoon, council. May I be able to present my flyer?
Sure.
Currently, I'm not in, um, um, the North Miami, um, district, but I will be providing my service in the North Miami Library. I'm in a district called, um, Unincorporated. So, um, that's where I'm located. Um, my name is Natasha Jocelyn and this is my first time coming in front of the council. But I have a passion for, um, financial literacy. I do have a profit business where I went to school for accounting and taxes. And since I've been volunteering at Camilla's House, Chapman Partnership, and I also work with, um, Style Saves, I know there's a need for, um, financial literacy. Uh, it's an alarming high, um, bracket of, um, well, not a high bracket, um, it's alarming plague of homelessness down here in South Florida. It's about twenty thousand reported, so we don't even know how much people not reported. And I feel since they're down in the South Florida area, they're in the North Miami area too. And I just wanna find a way to educate people on different financial literacies to help them to budget, to get their credit in fa- to have a savings plan. Just little things to help them to say, okay, yes, I may be on the brink of X, Y, Z, but because I have this in place, I will be able to financially survive. Surprisingly, um, when I go to, um, Camilla's House, I go weekly. As you can see, I have over three hundred hours. You'll be surprised, the, the demographics between eighteen to twenty-four. It's very high. I also participate in the homeless trust meetings and the numbers keep increasing. So I feel it is a need not only in South Miami, down, in the downtown area, but it's probably something that we can use not only in North Miami, but we can use it in North Miami Beach, all across Miami. It's just something that's just devastating the community. This is the future and we gotta make sure we preserve their intelligence so they can be successful, not only for us, but the generation that comes after them. I think that's Generation X, if I'm not mistaken. And I do apologize if I don't know.
Does anyone, uh, have any questions for the applicant?
So this is a new, not, a, a, a new endeavor. Aside from what's the, the work that you're, that you're doing currently at Camilla, Camilla's House, your outreach that you're currently doing. The non, not-for-profit is a new endeavor for you.
I've had my nonprofit since two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, it's been established since two thousand and fourteen.
And again, you have to excuse me because we are very limited in the information that was given to us.
No, no worries, no worries. Yes.
And I would like to actually be able to, um, research, uh, your.
More information? Yes, if afterwards you would like to speak.
They haven't handed it to me yet, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Last year, um, we participated in, um, activities for younger youth. We did a program in, um, North Miami Beach Senior. We do back, um, bookbag drives. Um, this year, we did with Style Save. I don't know if anyone's familiar. We were able to give back, um, six thousand youth's bookbags, um, school supplies. We also provided clothing, shoes, and entertainment during that time. The only thing is, I can't put, um, most of the youth, um, on, on the publication for their protection. So that's why you see mostly pictures of me because you can't provide. I went to Camilla's House first because of the adult program, but I stemmed into Chapman, which does have children. So it's just not only looking at, you know, the current demographics, but the future demographics too. And it's scary. It's scary cuz most times when the family have poor literacy, it rolls into the children and it's just a bad generational curse. It, it really, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, talk poorly about it anyway, but it breaks my heart each time I go there. But, you know, I still go because that's how you can help somebody. Let them know, hey, you know what? I'm here. I'm a voice. I'm not a voice. I'm an ear that you can speak to. Yes, I may not have all the resources, but I'm trying to advocate to the people who can give me the funds so I can help you as well. Not only down south, but I know it's here. It's everywhere.
And I have to commend you on this work that you do. Um, as a foster parent, I'm very familiar with the people, the families that you actually work with. And, um, there does need to be more, uh, education for the financial services and, uh, just support all the way around. As a foster parent, one of the main things that I do, uh, that I say is that my partner and I, we don't just foster the children, we foster the family.
Exactly.
And to give the whole family support so that when I have a reunification of a foster child, children, to the bio mother, I call them bio mothers, um, or family, that they are now set up with tools for,
Success.
Exactly. They have a job, they have a apartment, and I go and I advocate for them. So it's basically, again, we need people like you and I wish that we had, we could give more.
Yes, and, and, uh, since I know, you know, funding is hard, I decided, um, this December, I'm doing an event combined with my profit business. It's gonna be at Morton's Steakhouse. And the funds are going right back to, you know, community building. So I'm, I'm not saying thank you for the funding, but I'm, I'm hustling every day. I'm hustling every day. On the contrary, the chamber was gonna participate with my event and they decided to back down. But I'm like, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the floor running. Anywhere that the funds could be allocated to help, not only, you know, here, but just everywhere, I'm going. As you can see, I've, um, gotten fun from, um, Walmart. I've also gotten fun from, um, the SBA. So I'm just trying to help as much as I can. And if you need any reference from Camilla's House to verify that I'm there, or even from Chapman Partnership, I have contacts. I even have awards from Camilla's House, just showing that, you know, I'm very passionate about this. And even though I go in there crying, I'm happy to just be able to go out there and just say, you know what? If I can do it, you can do it too. And thank you so much for your time. I really do appreciate. You're doing a great job.
You keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Um, the next organization, uh, is Community Rightful Center. If there's a representative from that organization that'd like to come up and give a brief summary of what they're about and state your name and also the company's address?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn and I work for Community Rightful Center. My address is in ninety-five twenty-six, North East Second Avenue. Um, we're a small profit, um, agency. What we provide, we provide case management, job placement, and summer services for the youth. So what I'm asking today is for you guys to help me, um, allocate a fund for twenty youth, like disabled youth in the city of North Miami. Last year, we had the program. However, we didn't have enough fund to get those other kids that need to participate. Even though we get paid by VR to provide the program, but we don't have enough, um, staff to get those kids. And then I believe that is a good program because majority of our kids, they've been sheltered by their parents and we need to get them out to the community. Um, our service mostly we provide like job readiness, um, career training. And then, we, when we do those things, we help them to become self-confident. We, we teach them about self-motivation, things like that, that will help them in the future to become independent. So mostly, that's why I'm here for. So you guys go help me bring those kids out of the shelter to become independent. Because as we know, we all gonna go someday and then those kids need to be independent. And decided during the summer, we have, this is our second, um, this is our third time that we provide the services. And then last year, we, we have field trip. We bring, um, a lot of people from the, um, um, how you call it? We bring different, um, professionals to come talk to them. And then we, we take them to Miami Dade. So they was very happy because a lot of them been home and they never go nowhere. So what we do, we just, you know, trying to make things better. We teach them about money management. We teach them about college, you know, if they wanna go to college, you know, different things. We teach them about how to apply for SFA. Um, we also teach them about end deed, um, how to look for job. And then we also help them with their resume, how to build resume. So those are the thing that we doing. So, we trying to help them to become confident whenever they ready to go to the workforce so they could be ready and prepare to do so. So mostly, we work with, um, disability kids, with disabled kids. Yeah, and we have, uh, um, we contract by DVR, Vocational Rehabilitation, A, um, APD, as well as, um, VA, VA and, you know, different organization.
Is there anyone on the commission who has any questions for the applicant? Comments? Alright, well, ma'am, thank you very much, we do appreciate your time and uh we hope that, you know, you're able to proceed forward with your program and all the efforts that you're putting forward. And we ask that you just uh, you know, don't.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work and don't let anything that happens tonight, whether you do get allocated funds or not, please, please keep pushing forward and we do appreciate your efforts as a community leader.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's one of the thing we would like to do because not only we have the kids, we also have the parents. Because, you know, without the family being stable, you know, the kid itself is not, you know, you know,
Right.
Enough to, you know, so we have to make sure the family's stable. Let's say the kids have a problem, so let's say they need housing. We also help the client, I mean the family, because, because if they don't have housing, so that's a problem. So if they need social support, we also help them with social support as well. Not only job placement, but if they need other services, we also help them out.
With that as well.
Fantastic.
Excellent. Great, and keep up the good program, man, appreciate your efforts, thank you. Uh, the, looks like the last but not least, the Community Health and Empowerment Network Incorporated. If there's a representative from that organization that'd like to come up and give a brief summary and state your name and your organization's address?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mikel Titus, I'm the Executive Director of the Community Health and Empowerment Network. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. The program that we are offering is a business financial workshop, which is called Getting Your Small Business Ready For Financial Success. Uh, we're actually a health empowerment-based organization, which was established in North Miami. Um, I am a North Miami bred pioneer. And twenty years living in the city of North Miami. Um, I'm also, I've also worked with the Florida Department of Health for ten years as the Minority AIDS Coordinator as well as a Surveillance Manager. I've since uh departed to start this nonprofit organization to be able to provide services in the community uh that will be able to help individuals develop healthier habits, uh improve their lifestyle and well-being uh to avoid preventable diseases such as diabetes, uh heart disease and HIV AIDS. Uh, we also offer supportive and infrastructure assistance for other small businesses uh and nonprofit organization. And in this capacity, we offer our expertise to help these organizations maintain or extend their services through technical assistance and capacity building. So with this in mind, our organization offers these financial workshops that helps meet the educational needs of small businesses and individuals in the community. We have uh, I'll show this, we have done these workshops in the communities. And have partnered with the city of North Miami, uh the Councilman, the NMA, as well as Councilman Alex Desme, uh the CRA. We also partnered with the North Miami Chamber of Commerce to put on these events. And they have been very successful, bringing out individuals, entrepreneurs, uh mom and pop stores, uh established organizations, because what happened is we bring uh expertise, expert uh leaders in the community, business leaders, uh CPAs, uh financial experts, banks that we partner with, BBT, BBNT, right here in our local North Miami. Uh, they come in and they educate these individuals, entrepreneurs. And uh it's been astounding, uh the results that come out. They share their feedback through our evaluation, uh where they talk about how this is so needed because they're hearing about credit repair, they're hearing about um how they can get their business started fresh when, you know, avoid pitfalls that uh we often face that we don't know about, but we're able to educate them. Uh, one of the things they've always shared about is that it's not enough time because it's always a one-day session. So with this workshop, we can offer it uh as a six-week session where they could come in and we could specify on those specific topics. And uh be able to get them to uh expand, get the professionals, uh leaders to be able to talk about uh financial basics, legal, legal directions, uh helping them to identify resources, uh credit building, business skills. Uh, some of these, especially um Haitian-born uh entrepreneurs, there's a lot of things, they have such great skills, you know? They can sell the, the, the little um peanut, peanut brittle, um, yeah, they, they can do picles. And uh sometimes they just don't have the right guidance. And so we're bringing that right here in the city of North Miami, the city I grew up with, the city that I love and want to be able to serve and provide service for our people. So, I also have um one of our support team that's here with us, who's also a business owner. And he took part of that last session and he'll share his feedback as far as um what he got out of it.
Sure. That's fine, you're the last one, so.
Yeah, um, we know in businesses, uh there are different steps, you know, and to start, start off and to go. So what she does is to try to bring uh a lot of business owners and I try to move from the startup level to go a little bit further. The last um meeting, uh, uh, we had, the last workshop we had, we had more than thirty uh businesses.
Wow.
And uh that most likely some of them went to relocate in uh, in uh North Miami. Um, I'm in Boi Ward and I'm trying to work with her to establish uh a, a, a clinic here, I'm a physician. So um she uh helped us and guided us and tried to get the right contact and bring uh, uh business in the community. So that's uh, we are a network, we have a, a lot of other friends who want to establish and come down here and create jobs, provide opportunities. So uh we asking uh, 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 what she's mostly looking for is to move forward and to do more. Instead of maybe twice or three times, but to have a bigger program, like a six uh presentation on different topic, different subject. Invite different bank and entrepreneurs and educators and partner in the community to create more and improve the business model. So uh she uh is well-known in the community and um we're working together uh to uh make uh, to move forward uh the program.
Excellent. Thank you, appreciate your feedback.
And we, we have been blessed, uh like he said, uh to have partnership with the city of North Miami. Um, we've done a lot of things right now, we have our Red For Women's Health Fitness uh support group that we have going on and that's RED, which means the acronym for Run, Eat Healthy, Don't Smoke. It's an eight-week activity that's funded uh by the Miami Foundation. And uh that does uh help us to be able to be out in the community and get women and their families. I mean, we have little kids coming out with their moms and participating in activities, you know, pushing forward and not have, working, living that sedentary lifestyle that a lot of, you know, lower-income individuals tend to do because of, you know, lack of um activities to do. Uh, we also do the food distribution to the elderly on Friday at Griffin, Griffin Park. We go in there, we provide healthy foods for them, we also educate them. So whatever we feed them, we educating, hey, this is, you know, um wheat, whole wheat. When you're buying food, you know, with the Haitian community, it's white rice, you know, you put the big plate on, food on the plate and that's what they eat. They put a little bit of chicken. And so we're teaching them to use the my plate and proportion. So it, it's been really a successful uh time with them, they appreciate us when we come in, they know us by name. So it's always a great time. And of course, we end out the year with our um annual uh celebration where we recognize heroes and sheros in the community that is making a difference with our red dress uh and Thai soiree. And um our very own Councilman, uh Desme will be recognized, shameless blood.
Awesome. Was there anyone on the commission who has any uh, like to ask about the program or?
Um, I'm just looking on, on your website here. And I see all the different great things that uh you do as a community or to, in, within our community. Um, and so the upcoming event that you have is the red dress.
Red dress and Thai soiree, yes sir. You're invited.
I am now.
At FIU's, right here in my hometown, FIU North Miami.
Okay, great.
Anyone else on the commission have any input?
So, uh, one other question, um, so with all of the things that you've done in the community and um and you, this is the first time you've requested funding, a grant?
You know, like I said, we always get support, I work very closely with the Florida Department of Health. Um, so we, we've been able to get a lot of support and I speak with my C, um, community people. And I'm like, tell me when the CBO come out this year, cause I want to apply.
Great.
So I stuck with them this year and I made sure that I was able to get in and get that application in, which I do write grants, so I was able to do it on my own.
And a lot of the support come from friends and other uh business owners that, you know, I could try to pitch in to make things happen and because we know that she's doing the right job and we know that this is for our community. So we usually try to just pitch in and make it happen and, uh but uh it's always a good idea to have a little bit more, to have a little bit more. But so far we've been trying to manage, but we can do more.
Of course. Well, thank you very much, we do appreciate your, your team and your organization for giving back to the community. And uh we'll see how everything lays out, I guess, at the end of the, at the hearing here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay.